Good evening, I'd like to bring the Board of Supervisors meeting or work session for May 19th, 2020 into session. Could I get a roll call please Emily?
Ms. Oates? Here. Mr. Carter? Mr. Fox?
Aye, here.
Ms. Colors?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here. Next thing on our agenda is a report from Taryn Logan on the Joint Tourism Advisory Board, recommendations for moving forward. Taryn, the floor is yours.
Well, as you know, the Tourism Committee has been meeting to discuss different options for the Town and County in moving forward with tourism. And Kerry Barnhart, who is our Vice Chair of the Committee, she's on the line, has put together this presentation with the options that the Committee is recommending that the Town and County could explore. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kerry. And I think you all have a copy of her slides that she sent today.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. So hi, I'm Kerry Barnhart. I am the Vice Chair of the Front Royal Warren County Joint Tourism Advisory Committee. I've been on the Committee for a little bit more, a little more than two years. I'm also a Warren County resident. And I am the President of Vibe Properties, who, Vibe Properties has invested very heavily in Front Royal on Main Street. Six of our 10 tenants right now are heavily dependent on the tourism industry. And also, I'm the President of Front Royal Brewing and I'm the day-to-day operator of Front Royal Brewing. My husband and I are majority owners of that business as well. Another thing that might be relevant tonight is that I have a 35-year career as an organizational consultant to Fortune 50 companies and to the federal government in strategy, transformation, and organizational design. So that consulting background made me a viable candidate to go out and do some extra research around organizational options. And with the Committee, we have gone through those options and talked about some of the objectives that we think you should consider moving forward. So I'm going to go through the presentation, and then if you have clarifying questions, please stop me, and at the end, we can have more of a discussion. So we were asked to do this presentation to provide some options, structural options, and some objectives for the town in particular, but also, as you know, the joint tourism impacts the county quite a bit. The reason for that is because of the leadership changes of the town. But it's a great time to stop and reflect in terms of what we need to do for tourism as a whole, and I think there are some things here for everyone to consider. So the objectives really are to determine the short-term objectives for change, determine a structure that provides direction, leadership, and positive tourism growth, and create a long-term plan with budget metrics and oversight responsibilities. And those objectives really belong to both the Town Council and the Board of Supervisors, the Town and the County, because these are leadership requirements in terms of making tourism work, mostly again because of a structural issue, but also, as you can see, performance management as well. So we step back and talk quite a bit about tourism. And this seems very obvious, but tourism is the act and process of spending time away from home in pursuit of recreation, relaxation, and pleasure on the use of commercial provision of services. Sometimes tourism gets confused with community development or community activities, and tourism, you know, sometimes goes hand-in-hand with a lot of the things that we do for individuals in the county and the town. But we're looking at this mainly from a tourism perspective of those outside of the town actually using the services, the commercial services within the town, and also visiting our great natural assets. So when we look at it, we see that tourism is one of the largest industries in Front Royal and Warren County, if not the largest, depending on how you measure it, bringing in for the private sector over $151 million in revenue, $34 million in payroll, and 1,700 jobs, and that was from 2018. It's been growing at a rate of about 4% a year. This year is going to be quite different because of our current situation, but it is a growing industry for our area. So when you look at all the amazing assets that we have here, myself, my husband, we moved here because of these amazing assets. We love the historic Main Street, we love the natural assets, we live right off of the Appalachian Trail, we love Warren County and what it has to offer with the wineries, of course, the breweries, and we decided to open a brewery, but also, all the parks and the hiking and the climbing and the rafting. We think it's an amazing place, and we think it's also can compete with some of the largest and most well-known attractions throughout the country. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that in terms of some of the research that we did. But I have a list here you can look through of all the historical and natural assets that we have, but there's even more, but here are some of the highlights. So it's something that really would attract those from the outside. And as you know, even in the last couple of weeks, people are coming in droves because to get out of the city and just to get out into the open. And we think in the next couple of months, more and more people will be coming out and they will be traveling more locally, and so we really have to take the opportunity to embrace that in a very responsible way. So our current situation, and this is beyond the COVID-19 situation, is that the tourism is funded by 60% of lodging from the county. Warren County, total lodging tax for 2019 was $195,000, and 70% of lodging tax for the town, Town of Front Royal, total lodging tax for the town in 2019 was $190,000. And what people don't realize, I think there's a fear out there, particularly with some of the residents of the Town of Front Royal because of the change, that funding would go completely away from tourism. But the reality is that we must spend that money on tourism per the state of Virginia. The lodging tax has to go through tourism. So if you just look at that money alone, in 2019, $247,000 had to go, had to be tagged for tourism. Historically, both the Town and the County have put additional funding towards tourism because it's a very important industry for our area. And so in 2020, 2021, the tourism budget for the Town, the line item right now is $225,000, for the County is $200,000. And so that's $425,000 to spend for the 2020, 2021 budget year. Another surprising thing for many, not for you because you kind of live in this world, but for others' residents, is that the County and the Town have separate budgets and a separate process for tourism, but are connected through the Joint Tourism Committee. So I think there was a belief that all tourism came from one location, and that was a visitor center, and really, that is not the case, though the visitor center does provide services to both the Town and the County. The funding goes to a couple of different larger projects, larger marketing activities, and visitor services. So that's just a point of clarification to educate around the process. In January 2020, the Town of Front Royal removed the Director of Tourism, which left a void in structure and leadership. So there are activities that are continuing, groups that are still contacting us, and really, there is not a solid leadership structure right now in terms of how to address that, particularly on the Town side. Additionally, the Front Royal Tourism Department employs 3.6 paid FTEs dedicated to tourism and obtains assistance from two to eight part-time volunteers, depending on seasonality. So in the summertime, they pick up more volunteers, and those volunteers will work part-time to cover some of the shifts in the visitor center. Staff operate out of that visitor center located on Main Street and perform various tourism-related responsibilities, including social media, and they're also the kind of the interface for groups and for individuals. The visitor center, which is located on Main Street, is a certified tourist information center. It's certified by the Virginia Tourism Committee. It's typically open between 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM, seven days a week. And that schedule is, you know, pretty extensive schedule, but one of the requirements of being a tourist information center, that certification requires you to have so many hours per week, so that's why you see that kind of extensive number of hours. That group, again, is the frontline to those coming into town. Any questions so far before we get into what the Advisory Committee does? Okay?
I actually did have one comment. So your, your presentation right now that's on the screen, it's really zoomed in, so some of the text and the photos are being cut off. Is there any way that you could potentially zoom out or maybe get out of presentation mode and just go to the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
How's that better?
Much better.
Much.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you for that feedback. Okay, so the, the Joint Tourism Advisory Board, or Advisory Committee, it's actually Committee, is really, is the bridge between the two entities, and also, they exist to promote tourism and to encourage other individuals and businesses to invest in tourism development. And that group has nine members, and those members are appointed by both the Town and the County, has both a Town and a County representative, plus it has the President of the Chamber of Commerce, and six members, of which a few of those members represent the lodging committee, which is required, because the group serves as the local tourism industry organization, and that's part required by the Code of Virginia to kind of help with the oversight of those lodging taxes. The officers, the current Chair is Katie Tewell, I'm the current Vice Chair, and the current Secretary is Taryn Logan. So that's a little bit about the background of everything, just to get us all in the same place. Really, we're going to go to the recommendations now, and really, the recommendations aren't specific recommendations, they are directional in just providing our thoughts on what needs to happen moving forward from a leadership perspective, where decisions have to be made by both the County and the Town. So the biggest recommendation from the Committee is really to have a vision for tourism. So if you spoke to individuals from the Town, from the County, from residents, from business owners, you would get a vastly different idea of what tourism should be and what it should look like. And I think everyone would like to see, you know, tourism to some degree. I think there's a lot of energy and emotion around tourism, but what that looks like is really up to individual groups or businesses in terms of what it looks like across the board. I think there's a lot of really good tourism intention and a lot of good tourism activity, but I don't think everyone is on the same page, and we've talked quite a bit about that in terms of the Tourism Committee, and it is one of our responsibilities to try to promote everyone getting on the same page. But a vision is really important, and a vision that is embraced by both the Town and the County together would give us our biggest bang for the buck. So our recommended objectives, really, is first to identify the true target customer, the experience that they want in what we have to offer, and the economic potential of that. Again, are we with, it seems like a lot of money for some people, but for $425,000, when you spend it on marketing, you can burn through that very quickly. So knowing who our target customer is, is it those people who are in the Northern Virginia area, is it those people who are in the Philadelphia, West Virginia, Richmond area, is it those individuals who are European tourists or who are visiting to see our natural resources? Really, we probably hit up just about every group that you can imagine, but what, which is important, but what is our, what's the priority of those groups? The second piece that we've talked quite a bit about is defining clear metrics to assess performance, progress against goals, and to benchmark against best-in-class entities. So there is some measurement that does go on around tourism, but the question is, what are we holding individuals accountable for in terms of, in terms of performance? And I'll go over a little bit more specifically, some ideas around those metrics. But when we did the research, it was hard to find what's the baseline, what's the progress against that baseline, what is best-in-class? And so we're recommending that we step, step it up in that activity a little bit more. Social platforms, particularly in the, on the Town side, there's a dependence on print advertising. Print advertising is important, even when you look at some of the areas that are similar to us, that are very successful in the tourism space, they will still do print advertising. It hasn't gone away. But, and a more important thing right now is to look to online social media, to include paid ads and things like geo-targeting, and higher use of video and original content. It allows you to do much more targeting, and again, if we know who our customer is, we can get very specifically to that customer, and it allows us to measure that we are getting there versus if we do print advertising in a magazine, it's very difficult to look at the return on that investment, and it's a very expensive endeavor. So while, again, print advertising is important, it's important too that we do more social media, and especially the use of original content. So original content is king in the social world, and we use some original content, but we don't have enough to kind of keep it very authentic and keep people engaged in what we're doing. Analytics, improve the SEO and track and report on online positioning, Google Analytics, track and report on social media metrics. So setting the metrics are important, measuring them, and looking at the analytics is incredibly important, because if you measure and you don't, I mean, if you have a metric and you don't look at your success, it's not very worthwhile. So the, right now, the website that is most used for this area is the Discover Front Royal website, and there are other, you know, the County also has web assets, the Town has other web assets, but really, in terms of to understand the total, and of course, the Chamber does too, but in terms of understanding the total picture for a tourist, they're hitting up a couple of different areas, and we're not really understanding what, how successful we are in those areas. The next piece is sustainability. So to prepare for this, one of the things that I did was I reached out to many different organizations throughout the country, and I did quite a bit of research with tourism associations. And I looked at, or areas that were smaller than us, that were larger than us, but all of them kind of best-in-class, to see if I can learn from where they were and where they, how they got to where they are now. And one of the things, the areas that we most closely match with are very concerned about sustainable tourism. So while they bring a whole, you know, ton of people into their areas, they don't want the individuals to really hurt our natural resources. So sustainable tourism becomes critically important, and people care about that too. So it also, you know, provides like-minded people to come and explore our areas as well. So it's something that we haven't done a lot with in the sustainable tourism. We don't promote that idea as much as we need to. We do a little bit, but not enough. It's not a theme, so that's another recommendation. Resources, and this directly impacts the County, is leverage the combined funding and resources of the Town and County to get the biggest bang for the buck and reduce redundancy and competing messages. So when I looked at several other areas, the, this was always a struggle between Town and County, or City and County, in terms of how to use those resources. And what the other areas, when I talked to them, they had recommended that you really take a lead for both the tourism and the branding, and they don't have to be the same in terms of branding and who takes the lead in branding and tourism, but that you have one message, and that you're bringing individuals here that can understand where they're coming to. So that's one of the things we think is important, and also, you know, just things like videos, things like paid advertising. We think that you'll get a bigger bang for the buck if you bring those resources together and you look at all the opportunities to bring individuals into the area. The ambassadorship, increase ambassadorship, volunteerism, and local business engagement. There are so many people in this area that feel as strongly as I do, and those who are on the Committee, they love this area, this is their home, and they would love to show it off and help individuals see it in a responsible way. And so those volunteers, they don't really have a way to always connect to all the activities that we could connect them to. So that, the volunteerism is important. Also ambassadorship, when those come in, those individuals come into the Town or into the County, that the frontline individuals, like the servers and the bartenders, and those who work in the convenience stores and the gift shops, know about the assets of the Town and can speak from one voice. That sometimes happens today, but doesn't happen as much as it should, and so the group is recommending that we increase the ambassadorship. And there's lots of interest, but really, if you get that question, what is there to do around here? And the answer is, beats me, or, you know, nothing. That's a bad answer, because we really want to be ambassadors of the area. And then the last piece is branding. We talked a bit about branding. Can you guys still hear me? I hear a lot of static.
We can hear you.
Okay. So we talked quite a bit about branding, and based on some of the conversations I personally had with some of the areas, this is also a struggle too. What they recommended is you kind of pick a brand, and so in some areas, the brand is the city. So for instance, Asheville, or Chicago, or Moab, Utah, or, you know, there's Sedona, Arizona, who I spent quite a bit of time with. You pick what the brand is, and so sometimes it is that Town or that City, and other times it is the County. So for instance, in Sonoma, where there are many different towns, they all tend to do very much the same thing, then you would pick the County, and so Sonoma would be, would do a lot of the tourism, and there'd be participation in that tourism. So what, after some discussion, we talked about the brand being more Front Royal for a couple of reasons. One, if you notice, a lot of our hotels do use Front Royal as a brand for themselves. But secondly, from Northern Virginia, which is a target market, or at least we think it's a target market, you see the signs, "Front Royal," all the way from Washington DC, all the way to us here, and also on 81. We're lucky to have that kind of advertisement all the way along, no matter what exit you get on, you say, "Front Royal is this way." So to really leverage that for the area, and again, we don't think we do a great job of bringing all the resources to do that. It doesn't mean that the County isn't used as a brand, but there is a lead brand, or they're always mentioned together, so that you, again, connect those pieces. Any questions about that?
So Kerry, this is Dolores, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Hey, I, so you talked about targeting the customer. Are there current metrics that indicate who the customer is? Do we have measurements or metrics to identify that now?
Yeah, it's a great question. The, I actually spent quite a bit of time with the visitor center, where they do do some metrics, and Taryn, I didn't spend as much time with you in looking at your metrics. But the visitor center actually has a lot of followers that are local, but then beyond there, they look at individuals in Northern Virginia and in the Philadelphia area was, was an area that just trended. Now, I didn't see any specific targeted campaigns, so they don't have any metrics that said, "We're targeting these people, and then this is our return," but they kind of, they kind of measure it just broadly, and who's coming here, and why are they coming here, and maybe we should do more in that area. So they are doing some of, some with metrics, but they're not as targeted as we would want to see them. We also do get quite a few international travelers here as well, and there are some statistics on that as well. But again, it's kind of a broad brush in terms of, we look at who shows up versus we're going after this exact segment, this age group, this location, you know, this gender, this, these types of activities, they love outdoor hiking, whereas other jurisdictions that I talked to, tourism organizations, they know exactly who they're targeting, they know exactly what the activities that they're doing, and they know the increase in those people who are doing those activities. So for example, Sedona knows that their largest activity is, they know exactly who their hikers are, and they know the increase of hikers from year over year. We don't, we're not that sophisticated in looking at those things.
Thank you. So would we have to acquire some sort of metric software to identify this, or is that baked in to the social media aspect? Is there a way, I see you have Google Analytics, and so obviously, that's from Google searches and that sort of thing, but are there other ways that we can come up with these metrics pretty quickly?
Yeah, so let me, let me hold that question for a minute, because I will jump into, further into metrics in a second, if that's okay.
Absolutely, thanks.
So in the recommendations, again, a lot of this is about structure, and we really wanted to step back and take a look at the work of tourism. So this is not the people, because the first thing you do, and particularly myself, my background as an organizational development professional, you look at what are, what's the stuff, what is the work? And so the work of tourism kind of falls in these, these major buckets, and then under that are very specific responsibilities and perhaps jobs. But the work, it kind of falls into strategy, planning, and budgeting, so somebody has to do that work and take the lead on that work. Marketing and advertising is work, physical infrastructure, and I put this on here because it's important, when you're looking at the dollars, there's been, you know, some question and maybe slight debate about whether things like lighting is really tourism, or police services, or at least part of the police services are tourism. Really, that is from a strategy perspective, those things are tourism, but not necessarily from a budget or an operational perspective, those are county and town type of activities that would fall outside of tourism. But tourism would definitely have a point of view on that, so it's important to keep that in mind when you're doing the work. Visitor services is also important. When we looked at these other entities, and again, we looked at places like Moab, and Asheville, and Sedona, and Sonoma, California, and other places in Virginia as well, which I'll go into in a few moments, but they typically do have visits- But they, they typically do have visit, some type of visitor services. Not all, but most have visitor services, a frontline that is somewhat like a concierge services. So however we do that, we think that that component should be a function of tourism. Research and analytics, what we just talked about, is also important. And it can be, and in, in some ways should be, separate than marketing and advertising, because it really is the judge of how well you're doing with marketing and advertising. So your frontline marketing may be not the best person to be doing the analytics, because as you know, with analytics, you can pick something to make yourself look pretty, pretty good. So we should have more objective look at those things. And then the last piece is partner liaison. And this is actually a pretty big function for tourism in that there are a lot of groups that are interested in coming to the area. The hotels do quite a bit of that. But so does the tourism, do the tourism professionals here in terms of making those connections. The partner liaison also has to do with the other tourism associations. So the Virginia Tourism Commission and other even regional tourism organizations. And then lastly, the business, the business areas, because we are promoting the commercial assets as well. And so having connections to those businesses is very important. And to have a very objective connection to those businesses is very important, because a lot of groups will say, "Well, where should we eat? Where should we stay? Where should we shop?" And to be able to provide that information and connect them to those assets is very important. Not just from the visitor services perspective, but from the planning perspective as well. So this is to the metrics, Dolores, that you were just talking about. So when we, you know, we know that metrics are an important piece of this and a piece that we have not done enough on. And really, that, that is somewhat of a leadership issue. I think if the individuals who are doing tourism, you know, they look at the metrics and they, they care about them. But really, metrics should be set by the leadership. So we're asking that the board supervisors, the county administrator, the, the town manager, the town council really think about what you want to do with tourism and what, what does success look like? So some potential metrics that we looked at, and, and again, these are best practices, are achievement of an annual business, annual slash business marketing plan. So what is the tourism plan? And have you achieved those, not only those activities, but those goals of that plan? Growth in lodging tax, these are all measurable things to say, where are we with lodging tax? You can assume that lodging tax will grow as tourism grows. Growth in meals tax. I know that I, you know, run a brewery and a restaurant. About 50% of our business is, is tourism-based. And so to know that that meals tax, when that grows, you know that I'm increasing on the tourism side for sure. Park services, visitors entrance. So we looked at things that were a little bit more unique to our area. But to look at the park services visitors and understand at the front royal entrance, where were they this year? And where should they be in three years from now? That's important to see we're growing for those, those individuals who are looking at, who are interested in the natural assets. Earned media. So that earned media is the media that is not the paid media that you go out and buy an advertisement, but the earned media that you get written up from a tourist section of the Washington Post, or a travel writer, or, you know, the 10 best places to go in the United States if you just have a weekend. If we hit that kind of media, that should be measured. So it should say, "Where are we today? And how many times are we hitting kind of the thought leaders in the tourism area?" And you can pick, you know, six, 10 important, you know, publications that you would want to be featured in. And you can try to engineer them to some degree, but really, they're going to come here and decide whether we're worthy. And so that is a potential metric of tourism. Website and mobile and social analytics, very important. Again, we look at these today, but we do not have benchmarks. The, the analytics would show you that a lot of engagement is within this area and not necessarily, and some within the Northern Virginia DC area, but, and, and beyond. But it's not measured in terms of, "Here's a campaign, and here's a return." Also, there is very little, if there's probably no, paid, paid marketing that is done, in social paid marketing. And we don't use all of the social platforms as well. So paid marketing can be very important. And I think, at least on the, in the town, they're moving in that direction. But that's something that can also be measured quite easily as well. Business survey is to find out, you know, what is it that individuals want from the tourism? And are we achieving that goal? And to reassess on business survey. And then an increase in tourism-related business revenue. Obviously, both entities, town and county, can, can look at that by looking at the, you know, the types, the industry codes that would be tourism. And those are very easily to categorize, do a subset of that, and see, do we have an increase in tax revenue for, from these types, these, you know, 15 types of businesses? And, and you can set a baseline and see where we are. Again, we don't have this kind of discipline. I think there's, there are some individuals that are, you know, track these types of things, but not together as a suite. So I don't know, Dolores, if that answered your question in terms of metrics?
It did, it did. And, and you know, and I believe that we could probably start, Carrie, with the park service visitors attendance, because I know they do measure. I don't know how deep they drill down into the, their visitor numbers and where they're from, but certainly, we could start there. Because, you know, yeah, that to me would be, you know, the easiest source to start, at least taking into account where these people are coming from.
Yeah, and if you could, you could see, when you put all this together, you could create quite a robust dashboard. And those individuals whose job it is to do tourism, you could hold them accountable and saying, "Here's where we were, and using these types of metrics, here's where we, you know, where we need to be." And you could see if we're moving in that direction. So that's the idea, is to have more kind of a dashboard of these things. But yeah, it makes you think, you know, how are we doing with these things? And that, that was our question when we started to dig into this. And we got a little bit, you know, some of it was pretty sketchy in terms of the, the depth of this information.
If I could make a suggestion as well? If you would.
Say that again.
If I could make a suggestion on getting statistics on people, where they come from? The two main canoe companies in our South River area, Don Roberts with Front Royal Canoe Company and John Gibson with Downriver. I think, at least for John and possibly Don as well, that they may keep a ledger or have a ledger where people can say where they're from. And that would be another avenue to pick up where our target areas are coming from.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. And I think a lot of the businesses, we, we do as well. We know where our customers come from. And so if you got kind of a total look at that, it would be pretty interesting. And we, we could understand that. And where they're from is one thing, where you want to attract them is another thing, and why. And so particularly right now, I think we have a great opportunity for those who are in our area and want to do a weekend trip or a day trip, because they won't be traveling overseas right now. They won't be traveling across the country right now. There's going to be a lot of interest to attract those who are, who are regional. And we have all the, you know, all the assets imaginable here think will have a great opportunity, if done responsibly. So that's something we can start to look at. But if we were, you know, specifically interested in that, we would start camp, very targeted campaigns. We would know exactly who we're trying to target. We would do paid advertising. We would do, you know, you know, look at the visitors' attendance and look at those canoe companies and understand exactly who's coming out here and whether we're successful or not.
Carrie, how much of this stuff is already being done right now? Or in the past? I know we've had a two- or three-month hiatus on all of this stuff. But before that, was there metrics being generated? So we actually know? Or we have a starting point, so we know where we, we have been and where we need to go?
Because we, because there's a website, because there's a Facebook site. Instagram is not active. But yes, there are metrics. So the question is, there, you know, metrics are generated and just like the canoe company has them, the visitor center has them. It's, they're just not all pulled together. So our recommendation is just to pull, we have a good starting thing. And of course, we know what the meals tax is, we know what the lodging tax is. But to pull it all together in some sort of dashboard, that work has not been done. That's the work that needs to get done.
And who do, who are you expecting to actually do that? Is that going to be the advisory board? Or are you expecting the leadership, which is the town council and the board of supervisors to get that pulled together?
That's a great segue here, because now we're going to talk about structural options. And that's, that's a great question, like, who does that work? And it's one of the questions that was posed to us, because the organization was somewhat broken apart. So let's go through that and see if we can get some more insight there. So the first, we looked at four structural options. And again, we looked across the country. And we looked at the state of Virginia and spent some time with the Virginia Tourism Commission. But we also, you know, spent a lot of time. I spent tons of time on the phone talking to various directors of tourism throughout the country. And were amazingly helpful. And many of them actually even sent documents to me, contracts to me, metrics, all sorts of things, and which were great, because it's a great place to start. But what, this is what we found, that there were four, based on what we learned and looking at the tourism associations, there were four major structural options. And there's tons of variations on these options. But I, we kind of, you know, put a, you know, a line in the sand in terms of, you know, just, you know, this is, this is a start in terms of looking at them. So the structural option, the first one, is an in-house option. So this is where the county or the town, you'll see it's a dotted line from the county, just because the director of tourism for the area was a town employee. This can very easily also be a county function versus a town function. And there's a lot of reasons to do that. And, or to keep it with the town, either one. But the, so that dotted line could switch, and it could be the opposite in each of these pictures. Again, we just picked that because of the particular situation we're in. So the town manager or the county administrator, either one, would employ that individual and that they would be a town or county employee. The dollars would come from that government entity to that employee. And they would do, this employee would do strategy planning, budgeting, partner liaison. And then they would have a staff, a tourism staff and visitor center and all the things, and it would all be in-house. And that is essentially what you had before. The joint tourism committee here would act as they do now, as an advisory committee. And again, it's very similar to what we had before. What, you would also see a lot of jurisdictions in Virginia have this structure. For some reason, there's less of a structure with some of the other pieces than there are in other, you know, big tourism areas or popular tourism areas. But Virginia seems to have this structure quite a bit. I think it's because of the size, the counties and the size of the tourism destinations that they tend to have this structure. But the, the tourism, one of the areas that has this also is Franklin County, Virginia. But there are many other, you know, towns and counties that have a similar structure. So again, that's kind of the, a little bit of the static flow. The second one is to outsource some functions. So this is, again, this individual would report to the town or the county. The joint tourism committee would be also an advisory, in the advisory function. The money would go to that employee. They would have the visitor center and tourism staff. They would, they would contract out some functions. So they would contract out things like marketing and advertising, and we mean pretty completely, and research and analytics, or whatever makes sense in terms of the very sophisticated, you know, essential functions that you would do. Could be completely managing your, your website and your website analytics. The, what we recommend, though, is if you go in this direction, that some of the content management stays local. So if you, let's say you hire a firm from Ohio, you don't want them to generate content for you, because they are not here every day. So that content generation needs to be authentic and needs to be kind of ground level. But they would be handling kind of the campaigns and the, and the research and the analytics. So that's another way to look at it. The Winchester has this kind of model. And they, they outsource part of their, of their function. Three A's. So this is the first of the fully contracted out model. This would have, again, the town and the county. It, they would contract it fully out. And this would be to a tourism corporation, a marketing company, or a chamber of commerce. This is very, you know, places like Moab and places like Sedona, this is very common. And you would think a place like Sedona or Moab, you've heard them before, are much larger than we are here. Their, their residential base is much smaller. It's a quarter of the size of what we have here. So those places do a great job in advertising, and it's mostly their natural resources. So again, Sedona is all about the outdoors, and they have a very small base. They also have a county, they actually have two counties they work with, and the city of Sedona. And they kind of all work together. But the city of Sedona has a chamber of commerce that leads tourism, and the others fund that. And that funding is quite a bit more than we have here, because the lodging tax generates more, because they have so many more hotel rooms. But that, that's just an example of a model that would work. The, the Bath County does have that private marketing organization. So that is one that has that. They, they actually contract it completely out. So actually, three B is where you would see ones like Sedona. Because in this case, that committee turns to a board. So where the committee was advisory, this one turns to the board. And the town and the county both employ that board, you know, very much like you would do with other boards, like economic development, or, you know, that you would do with financial boards. This board would be, would have fiscal control. So the direction you would plant together, but they would hold the dollars, would be of that board. If we were to do that, that board obviously would move from advisory committee to much more of a, a planning and budgeting and oversight committee, or board. And then they would manage the contractor. In this case, would be Tourism Commission, Marketing Company, or Chamber of Commerce. And this is where places like Sedona have, have a structure like this. Also, places in Virginia, Fairfax County has a structure like this with their, the Virginia Convention and Visitors Corporation. But you'll see Asheville is another place that has this. You'll see lots of places have this structure that are big tourist destinations. And again, some are smaller than we are here.
Carrie, could I interrupt just a second?
Sure.
We're going to be, we've got a, another board meeting. It starts at seven. And I'm not trying to force you to, to step it up a little, but we're going to run out of time.
Yep, I'm.
Just, just making you aware.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the last piece is the, is if you were to have that board and you were to do grant management, you would do grant management. So in this case, you are providing grants in different categories to different groups. So you could provide a grant to a chamber, you could provide a grant even to the library, to those who want to do a festival. And the idea here is that that board provides the vision and insight and awards that money. That is another model. And this, an example of this is Frederick County, Maryland, Main Street Communities Cooperative. And this um, an example of this is Frederick County, Maryland, Main Street Communities Cooperative Fund. So um when you do the outsourcing, it's really important to make it visible, transparent, to have a renewable contract, um not just provide it to someone, but to make it very visible. And the reason for that is there's a lot of scrutiny from a public perspective. But also, it's important from just a fiduciary perspective to have that transparency and um in award it to those who who will be accountable and you can measure that accountability. So the next steps really are for the county, the council, and the board of supervisors to determine a structural option together, um design those roles and ensure the best fit, hire for those roles. Um, there may be or may not be individuals who fit um and to so to look at a restructure, select the contractor, contracted functions, um communicate the organization. And then shift uh to and if it, the tourism uh shit committee shifts to a board with fiscal accountability, that means a restructure, a legal restructure, um and perhaps um uh the participation needs to change on the current committee. So any last minute questions?
Well, no, this is very well put together and I appreciate it. Um, South River is a is based agricultural, residential, and tourism. So I have a big interest in promoting that. Um, so it's, thank you so much for all the work you've put into this.
So I think that that again, the next steps are for you to have a conversation with the town. Um, I think they're interested in doing that and just helping move us forward and actually providing the committee some guidance as well in terms of direction where we're going. We need that input, it's really important.
Carrie Duke Stan, I just wanted to thank you. I thought it was very well put together and gives us a lot to uh think about. I think it clearly outlined some of the different options and and um how they would work um as far as the management. I know with the two entities, it's a little different. I think you navigated uh those options pretty well, so it gives us something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Perhaps we might want to consider a work session in the future to discuss this a little further.
Yeah, that's exactly what you wanted, Mr. Chairman. You wanted options and how it could work. And I think they, you know, kudos to them for putting that together. That's, you know.
I think they did a good job.
So Mr. Stanley and the rest of our board, I actually am going to suggest something different. Um, I think that we need representatives from our board. I know I have been on the tourism, I've been attending those meetings and I would like to be a part of it. And that we get some representatives from the town, representatives from the the board of supervisors, and we present the option that we think we can all live with. And that way, because my concern is, is that we're going to continue to chase our tails with going around in circles without having all the stakeholders in a room and and confirming what it is that we would all agree to.
Don't disagree.
I I agree, and I'd like to join her if possible since South River is a huge tourism spot to the national and state park and river.
She wants to add ask the town perhaps to appoint a couple representatives as well?
Absolutely. That to me is the the only way we're going to get this done is to all of us to sit down in a room that are interested in pursuing this for our community and, you know, and basically deciding what it is we can all live with and the direction that we should take. And we need to do it sooner than later because I agree with Carrie that um the circumstances of COVID puts us in a very interesting position where we actually can benefit from um the folks that want to get out of the city uh and come into our area in the near future. So I I think we need to do that very quickly, actually. So anyway, that's my suggestion, guys.
Hi, Jason.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Um, let's go ahead and adjourn from this and then we're getting ready for our seven o'clock um borders, regular board of supervisors meeting.